I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could I do it again? Mr. President, please go on. You can do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce our board. To my far right is Kevin Brubaker. To my right is Vice President Greg Alec. I'm Mike Gebhardt. My left is Jim S. Backs. To his left is Annie Karstaffen, our Superintendent, Dr. Chama, and our Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Do you have any presentations tonight?
No, Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have any visitors' comments?
No, we did not have anyone to sign up for.
Okay. Board member discussion items.
Do you want to do roll call?
Oh, yeah, we might have to do roll call.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Alec?
Here.
Mr. Backs?
Here.
Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
And Ms. Karstaffen?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Alec. Sure. Board member discussions. Do you have anything?
Go ahead.
What am I talking about here?
Sure. Go ahead.
What are we talking about? The OSBA?
Yes.
Oh. Well, we just want to touch base here on the OSBA conference that was the last few days. The entire board went. Some of the cabinet members went. And I think it was a great time. We got to experience a number of sessions that were very informative and very helpful. And I'm really excited about the public funding for a private stadium. So I'm looking forward to hearing from Paul and Cyad and talking about the new schools and getting rolling on that. Some of the other sessions, anything jump out to you guys that you really enjoyed that you want to touch on here?
I was the delegate to the OSBA 61st Assembly. I don't know if I was roped into it or had the privilege of doing it, but nonetheless, there were several hundred districts that did not attend, did not represent their school districts in this. And I'm bewildered on why that would even happen, why you would not have a representative there. But there are multiple things that the General Assembly voted on. Most of it was terminology and language changes that was taking place. But the one thing that stuck out to me, and I talked to several people afterwards, the delegation voted, and this is a lot of what our district and other districts have already done in regards to the funding for the charter schools and requesting funds back. And I know Mr. and Mrs. Jablonsky have been big on this, but one of the things that we voted on said in part, "The OSBA supports legislation that grants Ohio Public Schools at least the same per pupil amount as the charter non-public schools in Ohio receive." And they direct any and all funds returned to the state by the charter schools to traditional public schools of residence. In essence, that's basically saying if the state gets any money back from the charter schools, that money should be shifted back to the local public schools that, quite frankly, it took away from. So it was nice to be able to sit in, and it obviously was voted on unanimously through the OSBA legislation. But I thought that was very interesting that even OSBA is on board with what the local public school districts are doing. So it was a privilege to sit in on that delegation.
Oh, good. Annie, anything?
The session from the ESSA, I thought, was very interesting. And then also at the Black Caucus, at the dinner on Sunday night, the spotlight on the youth. Actually, there were about 15 young men from Shaw High School in East Cleveland, and I thought that they did a wonderful job of spotlighting the positivity that the youth are doing. And again, I think I stated before that at some point I would like to see our youth go because we have a great group of young people here that are doing some positive things. So hopefully, we will be able to spotlight our youth again. And also, again, as he stated, the stadium. I thought that was a very interesting session as well.
Cool. Jim?
Yeah. As I'm always amazed at the number of acronyms that are used in this, particularly in school board districts, and everything seems to have some sort of an acronym tied to it. And I was happy to learn at the conference what EMIS meant. And that is the Educational Management Information System. And the neat thing about that session was I got an appreciation of how important the data in that database is and how important it is that it be exactly accurate, that it be very accurate, maintained, audited. And Greg and I had quite a few discussions on that. But in any event, I was amazed that, you know, you think about this information that we collect from all these different places, and that one particular item that's left out could possibly affect the funding that this school gets or this district gets. And so anyway, I liked that session in particular because I think, you know, we've got certainly with 6,500 students and however many hundreds of pieces of information we have attached to each one, the chances of error, it's there certain, we're certain there's errors in this database. And so that's something that I think there's probably some opportunities at that point to look at this in terms of some sort of a, and understand what our audit procedures are and what are we doing to purify this database and validate it. So that was interesting. I liked that.
I think the term that came to me with the EMIS was overwhelming. That was very overwhelming, how much information is in that system. And it was really nice to be able to talk to Anne Slasch about the information, and she's going to forward some information to the board also, so build a background on that. But all in all, I think it was a really good conference, and we really got a lot out of it, so.
Yesterday, Tom and I went to the State House and listened to a number of superintendents talk on the State House steps. There was about 150 to 200 people there, and it was very interesting. They were talking about the testing. And I think Banji Jablonsky and Dawn McNeely were both there. And I think later Dawn actually spoke to the Ohio Department of Education.
State School Board.
School Board. So that was interesting to listen to that and see the rally.
Good news about that, Mr. President, is they spoke yesterday. A lot of the concerns stemmed around high school graduation.
Right.
And the number of credits that our students will need next school year to graduate from the tests that are given. And we already got information today. And I don't know if the rally yesterday had anything to do with it or it was a catalyst, but they're already talking about changing the requirements and phasing them in over a period of time rather than just putting it into place. And you heard several people say yesterday that there's districts out there where 50 and 60 percent of their seniors may not graduate.
Oh, wow.
With the new requirements, so.
That's good. Any else? Nope. Okay. Item F, Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for the November 16th meeting? So moved. Second.
Well, second.
Discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstaffen?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
We'll be long. Treasurer's actions.
Thank you. Number one, the monthly financial report. To accept the financial report for the month of October 2016, which includes all bank reconciliations, investment reports, cash balance report, and appropriation and expense reports as detailed in enclosure G1. Number two, donations. To acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the following gifts and donations. Nagel South Side Farm Market has presented a donation of 20 large pumpkins valued at $100 to the students at Ely Elementary. The donation will be used for student activity. Ms. Sue Ockerman has presented a donation of school supplies and Christmas items valued at $300 to Westwood Middle School. The donation will be used for students in need of school supplies and student Christmas presents. Coats for Kids has presented a donation of winter coats valued at $7,574.
Wow.
The donation will be used for students in need of coats in the district. The American Legion Post 12 Auxiliary has presented a donation of 61 new coats valued at $3,050. The donation will be used for students in needs of coats in the district. Number three, purchase orders. To approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G2. And, Mr. President, I submit these recommendations for your consideration.
Thank you, Joy. I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Treasurer in item G. So moved. Second.
Well, second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to comment on all of the purchase orders that are listed. Every one of those are from our auxiliary services. So those are the services outside of the district. And if you would like to go through each and every one of them individually, but basically, they're year-long contracts, and the purchase orders weren't put in before the first date of service.
Thank you. Please call a roll.
Oh, wait, I have a question. On the appropriations, you have two, two line items that are over the annual appropriations. What are those? And do we need to do additional procedures for those amounts that went over the annual budget? It was district, agency, and then the termination benefits.
Let me get exactly to that. Yes, we will be doing those. We'll be updating the appropriations next month.
Okay. Good.
Now, please call the question, the roll.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Ms. Karstaffen?
Aye.
Mr. Alec?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Item H, you don't have anything?
No, I don't.
About item, Treasurer's report.
I would kind of like to jump on the bandwagon with the OSBA Capitol Conference. I want to thank the board for allowing me to go, and it was very informative. I went to things that will help hopefully with bond issuance and investments. I went to some of the legal seminars and anyhow, it was a great conference, and it was good talking to other people that were there also.
Good.
So, thank you.
Item J. Do we have anything on that? We pass a bond levy?
Absolutely. Mr. President, tonight's the first night as a team or as a Board of Education and as a school district, we've come together officially. And I just want to say thank you to the City of Elyria and all the voters for passing issue 23, which is going to bring quite a bit of change to the city itself as well as to the school district. And again, thank you. Also, thank you to the board for all your assistance throughout the last, what, 14, 16 months. Today was an exciting day with reference to the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission and the project. We met Paul, Paul and I, Joy, and two gentlemen from the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission, Bill Prentisall, and I don't remember the other gentleman's name.
Mark.
Mark Burr?
Barr.
Barr. Mark Barr. We had an opportunity to sit down and discuss the scope of the project and the project itself. But rather than me sitting up here talking about each of those steps tonight, since the stadium is going to be separate from the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission, it was a low-fEE-funded initiative, and that falls out of the scope of what the Schools Facilities Commission will do. What I'd like to do is have Cyad come up here tonight, talk a little bit about the stadium, Cyad, and where we're moving and how we're moving forward with that project. And then Paul will come up as well to talk about the timeline and the events that will take place from now, probably through the end of March, in the process of getting the process kicked off.
Would it make sense to maybe do the timeline first?
Sure. Good evening, board, and congratulations again to you and the community for a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. It was a privilege. How exciting. And to see Mr. Prentisall again today, it was 2007 when we had a meeting similar to the meeting that we had today, and nine years later, we're talking about getting the job done. So it's very, very exciting. He was excited to see us. He has been very helpful to us. And our relationship with the Schools Facility Commission has been excellent. The phrase that they're here from the state to help us, we make a lot of jokes about that in our business, but these guys, I think, are really here to help us. They are very friendly. They're very helpful. They're straight shooters. We asked them questions. They gave us answers. And they're the kind of team that when they don't know the answers, they get back to us. But it's very rare that they don't know the answer. This gentleman's been with the commission for 16 years. I believe he's a retired, not retired, but he's an architect by trade, isn't he? And he understands. He helped us with the Washington Building. When we didn't know what to do with the basement, we wanted to do something with that. The Facilities Commission didn't think it was suitable for instruction. We found a way to make it suitable for instruction, and you have the rest scholar down there. And this gentleman that we met with today played a large role in how to get that done. He's a preliminary in the process, a person in the preliminary steps. And in the memo that I had sent earlier to you and informal discussions that we've had from time to time, you have now a map in your mind, however general, that we can't go out and go to Home Depot today. You know that commercial, "Let's do this," and we'll go buy a couple of shovels and some concrete like we would on the weekend, and we're going to build a deck. We're building $140 million worth of school structure and athletic field. So you have to imagine, if somebody's willing to give you $80 million, that there are some processes and procedures in place that they want to have us go through. And we, our discussions early on were spot-on. The Board of Elections will be finalizing all of the tallies and notifying the Facilities Commission that we did in fact pass with flying colors. There will be a release of funds, but that's not going to be for a while yet, at least from the state. There's a process now where they're going to start right away in drafting a request for qualifications for architects. And they expect that to be done within about a week on their end, and then they're going to send it on to their various departments that have to approve the statements. And they asked us quite a few questions today that you may have questions about too, in terms of what's the project going to be like. Because in terms of architects and architectural firms, that would be considered. It depends on the scope and the magnitude of the job, but not only that, but the timeline. And one of the first questions they asked us is, "Did you plan on breaking ground in five places all at once?" And if they had to post it like that, they would look towards an architectural company that was doing five things at once. We spotted right away that all of our discussions with you and preliminary pre-bond work with AVG was that we would not do that. It would be a phased project, probably two or three schools initially along with the stadium, and then a couple of schools as the other schools came online. Interestingly, Tom was very quick to ask them, "Okay, we understand. We have to go through this procedure now of choosing an architect, which won't occur most likely before February 20th for it to be official. And then from there, we will go to a process of selecting your construction management company." We had three choices that were discussed, and hopefully, we were speaking for you from discussions that we've had informally, and that was a general contractor to do the job, kind of like building your house. You hire a person, and you bother them for about three months while they build your house. And you don't know quite who they're bringing in to do your plumbing and whatnot. They're taking care of it. We're too big for that. We decided, they decided, they didn't want us to do that. The other one was a design-build where the architect and the construction company were kind of the same building. And they likened that to things like, oh, drugstores and Taco Bell and places like that, that always pretty much looked the same. And you don't need a lot of input from a lot of people to determine how to make the building work. It is what it is, and they've built 400 of them. So they're going to build 401. Ours would not be the case because everything's going to be customized and tailored based on the needs of each of the schools that are going to be built. And although it's the same district, they'll be a little bit different in each way. So the one that we told them that we believe that you would move forward with is the construction management company at risk, or they call that CMR. So you're going to be hearing those initials, CMR, right along. They should come on board somewhere in March, and they would like the interviews to be March 27th, the week of March 27, 2017. And your interviews for the architectural company will be the week of February 20th. The architect chosen will be included with the selection, in the selection, of the construction management company. Basically, after that, you can, in terms of the co-funded, there would follow a set of procedures that are in place. There's, and you'll see that in the notes too that I sent you, that there are a series of meetings that will be held prior to the program of requirements, and you'll be hearing POR as we go along. And the POR is the ability of the people that are going to work in the building and the community that will be served in a particular building, the students, staff, administration, Board of Education, building by building. How are you going to teach? How are you going to work? How are you going to get your work done? And then the architect will design around that discussion and come back in various phases. I believe there's three phases, Cyad?
Four phases.
Four phases altogether. A series of schematics are one of the earliest ones, and then eventually, construction where they can actually work from documents. That process from now till then is about 14 months. You'll probably sell your bonds. Joy was talking to Mr. Baco, and you all know Mr. Baco. He was talking about February?
February, March.
She's on that schedule, and we're very hopeful. We don't want to make any promises, but in the news today, again, bonds are not high in terms of the interest rate. We advertised 4.5%. We're hoping we can do better. We didn't want to advertise that we could do better during the bond issue because the last thing we wanted was to tell our constituency that we could sell these bonds at 4%. And that obviously means the money that we'd pay each month would be lower on their tax bill. So Mr. Baco believes that it's still a good market for us. And as we get nearer to February and March, we're already halfway through November, we have reason to believe that perhaps we can beat the 4.5%. What that means to the public is lower dollars. The lower the interest rate on the bond, the less they pay. And I don't think anyone would be upset if we were a little high in our estimates. However, they might have been upset if we were low in our estimates. So that is on schedule for February, March. Architects selected from however many applicants we get. They're anticipating 12 to 16 companies, which you will have to rate. We'll have to find a process. They will turn in two sheets and the rating sheets that have all of the companies that applied on a numerical scale. They're going to give us a rubric on how to do that as well. Same thing for the construction companies. So that should be done by the end of February, construction company by the end of March. That's the co-funded procedure. Then the architect will go into the schools along with some work with the construction company to listen to staff, to listen to the community, and decide on how to make those first drawings appear. The drawings come back. You take a look at them. The school takes a look at them. Architects are always very happy to completely redraw things that they've sketched out. Thank God for computers these days, I suppose, to make those changes. But you can't imagine how nice it is. I remember in 2007, late '07, early '08, 2008, when the renderings of the building on what they were talking about, we didn't have to look at blueprints, which are difficult for people, but a rendering that looks like you're actually looking in a room that is built along with students and staff, and you get a sense of how it will look as they're going down the hall. From there, they go back and they have to finish and polish that off, and eventually, it'll be the kinds of drawings that they can actually build a building from. And then we'll have the winter probably that'll get in our way, but first chance they could get out and break ground should be in the early spring. Mr. Prentisall was projecting that it would be March of 2018, and that 17 months later, August of 2019, all things considered and things moving along smoothly, the first phase, which could be three of the five buildings, are completed for the school year 1920, 1920 school year. And that delay there is normal. It's a long process. It has to do with getting a lot of input. It has to do with some bureaucracy, some selection processes, and so on. But you don't have that problem with the stadium. And so we want to make it very, very clear to our public especially, that they'll see work that they can see at the stadium before they'll see work at the school sites. People think that shovels to ground means there's something being done, and if we don't see anything, shovels to ground, then we're not working. So it's very important that we get the message out that you're working very hard. It's already begun. The meeting already occurred today. It's only eight days after the election. And they went back to their offices to post the initial forms now for you to select the architect. You're going to have to approve another NOCA, Notice of Conditional Approval. And this is not deja vu. You already did it. You're not just thinking, you already did it. But I heard the explanation today, as did Tom and Joy. I'm not quite clear, again, why we're doing it for the second time. It has something to do with laws.
Laws.
And it was legal, and lawyers said that it was something they had to do because we're a lapsed district. Now, again, the public may hear the word lapse, and for fear of too much information, I think we should explain, we didn't do anything wrong. We're lapsed because we made a conscious decision back in the '12, '13 school years, somewhere back in that range. When we had an opportunity to go again with the Schools Facility Commission, we said that we were interested. But we made no effort to go for the bond issue because the more we had to work, back then, we were still closing schools, and we were adjusting ourselves to get right size because of the decrease in enrollment. We had staff reductions, and we had school closings, and the time wouldn't have been right to start talking about building new schools because, quite frankly, then, we didn't know exactly how many schools we would need. We didn't know how it was going to bottom out in terms of the kids leaving, and we know that now. So when we were approved for this project this summer, in August, was it, that the clock started?
July.
13 months is what you have to get it passed. Our 13 months went by consciously. So even though we're saying we have to call it lapsed, and they will call it lapsed if you ever saw any paperwork, it just means that we had this window that was open that for one reason or another, we couldn't take advantage of it. Some people, some school districts tried to pass their bond issue and failed. Others, like us, decided it was a bad time, but we wanted to keep our place in line. That's why it's lapsed. So it's nothing to do with anybody that did anything we missed. You'll have to do that at your December 14th board meeting. Joy will receive documents from the state that will look very familiar. They told us they will practically be exact, except for possibly now the timelines, and that you would need to approve that in December, and then it will go to the commission for approval. And again, you're hearing, "Didn't they already approve us?" Yes and no. They gave us a tentative approval. If we could pass the bond issue, this would be their final approval, and that's January to 26th. The Controlling Board, and that is of interest to anyone that The Controlling Board, and that is of interest to anyone that handles the money, they control the funds, they'll meet on February the 6th and there's no reason to believe they're not gonna release the funds shortly thereafter. When the contract's in place, actually, they won't release the funds. They'll approve the funds and then we have to have a contract.
Right. They release the funds as we need them.
Yeah. And you'll be seeing a contract from them spelling everything out that we already said we were gonna do. Now, what the public could see and I believe will see, if I understand things correctly, is the stadium, much before that. And so, Sayad, you wanna talk about the state of the stadium?
Paul, can I jump in here real quick? Before we talk about the stadium, your memo talked about an owner representative.
Yes, it did. District representative, owner representative.
Right.
Yes.
And is this something that we can continue on with you? Do we need a contract? Hopefully, you're not enjoying retirement too much, that you'll stay involved with this project with us and continue through?
Yes, I am enjoying retirement and the idea of part-time is very appealing. And this, although has time involved, it's nothing like being a superintendent and the hours that you have to put in and it's a single focus on a thing of high interest. It's interesting that during our meeting today, they brought that up and they said that it's not unusual to see a district representative doing the kinds of things that keep it flowing, that can take emails, go on the website, look at change orders, look at progress, work with the architect, work with the construction manager, be a liaison to the board, attend meetings and do all the kinds of things that would tie the superintendent up. And I'd be very happy to do that.
Okay.
It's, it would be amazing to actually work on the bond issue, to get the money passed and then see the buildings going from the ground up. That would be fun.
Is that something we would need formal approval on or?
I think so.
Okay. So, that's something for the board to consider here?
Yes.
I could submit to you a proposal of the work done and give you some options on hours, how much time you want me to spend on it.
Could you do that by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sayad?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Gentlemen, Joy. Again, congratulations. Job well done. You guys worked very hard. The community worked very hard to make this thing happen. This is exciting time again in L.A., you know? So, we are, we feel very fortunate to be part of this whole process we have been and we thank you for all the opportunity you have given us to work with this great community over here and we look forward to have, continue this if possible. So, having said that, in terms of stadium, as we were working this summer towards this project, we knew that there will be things which we have to get it done ahead of schedule, ahead of the bond issue. We started some due diligence work for stadium and some couple of Pioneer Field site because we were concerned maybe there's some wetlands or all that. So, we started that. So, we did some surveys, we did soil borings, we did some wetland evaluation and Pioneer Field, everything works, worked out pretty good, there's no. But when came to stadium, on the south side, they found some wetland, small little puddles throughout, total adds up to 3.7, 3.07 acres. So, when that happened, we had to, the district hired consultant PSI who has been working with us to see how we can mitigate that. And we are in a process of doing that because that south side where we have trees, we have some, that, those wetland areas and the bigger areas are in the area where we have our stadium planned and things like that. So, we, as we speak, they looked at our application, they came out, US Army Corps of Engineers, they confirmed those wetlands and then they wanted us to submit the application. The district has submitted it, they reacted, they said, why don't you go and look for some other site? Forty, forty-seven some acres over here. So, and see if you can find some land which doesn't have wetlands. So, we have gone through all that process. We looked at this map, there is no 40 acres available, which is contiguous and, which is in the city limits of school district, you know, L.A. City Schools. There is 40 acres in Midview, we don't want that. So, we have responded to the, we have, we had to do some mitigation. We said, okay, before we were trying to get rid of all 3.7, 3.07 acres, we redesigned some areas in our athletic complex and we said, okay, we can live with these little small little wetlands and work with it. And that's what we have sent it back to them, to US Army Corps of Engineers and Ohio EPA. Ohio EPA have also asked us to, asked the district to advertise in the newspaper and it's coming out tomorrow for comment period. So, there's a 30-day comment period for public to comment on this project if they have any problems with it, anybody has any issues with those wetlands, but that's a normal process, they put it. So, hopefully, to cut the long story short, hopefully, if we get this US Army Corps of Engineers comes back and gives us a okay in terms of our application, we can, Kevin is already working on the design part of it. We already, based on that we'll get all the approvals, we have already started that basic design right now. So, if things go smooth and everything goes as planned, we think that we should be able to break ground early next, late summer, sometime like that. But the first thing we have to do is to take the trees down. If the trees don't come down till, from November till March is the, is the tree, we can cut the trees, otherwise the bats are in the trees and we cannot cut the trees till next August, you know?
That's their mating season.
That habitat needs to be preserved or during, during.
That time.
Different times of the year, yes.
Yeah.
Sayad, what was the total amount of wetland area?
Total is 3.07 acres.
And how much of that can we preserve?
We said we can preserve a little over a half an acre.
So, about two acres is what we're down to?
Little, little over two acres. Little over two acres we have to mitigate.
Little over two to mitigate?
And there was a stream also, a 90-feet-long stream which goes by our, where the, if you see where that electrical service is, you know, there's a stream. Previously, we were putting, showing in our design, we were showing a pipe culvert. They said that is gonna affect our stream, so we said, okay, we'll take the pipe out, we'll give you a bridge kind of a thing, so it's, so we have worked with them to mitigate those issues. Hopefully, they will respond to us positively on that and in the next, we responded to their letter last week. So, we should hear from them within a couple of weeks.
Do they generally work with you on that?
PSI, who does this for their, on a regular basis, they think this should calm them down, you know? We were trying to mitigate the whole thing. Now, we're trying to work with them.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we should have an approval from them.
So, we're talking 2018, the stadium would be done and in use?
That is correct. The south side of the stadium.
So, next year would be. The Phase One with just a football field, right?
The soccer, the stadium.
For soccer and football.
Soccer, that's not the.
Not the entire complex that we talked about?
That is correct.
Okay.
But, but we have to, we have to design the whole thing because all the utilities, the calculations, things, you don't wanna go twice, you don't wanna make, you wanna make sure that if you have to have underground pipes and things like that, you have all that figured out earlier so that you are not going through the bill area again. So, the basic master plan will be there for the whole thing and then the south side will be addressed in Phase One.
Okay. And then also too, we obviously have a shortfall here that we have to start rolling on and the fundraising aspect, so that's gonna be an area we're gonna need to get rolling on right away also. Because I believe, what, eight million is included?
We're four million.
Four million short.
Right. But I'm saying eight million's included in the.
Haven't tried yet, so we can't say we're.
Nine point one.
Nine point one? Okay. Okay.
We probably need to spend some time by the next meeting, by the next board meeting, to determine how to move forward with that. That's a lot of money. That's not a steak fry spaghetti dinner.
Pancake breakfast.
Pancake breakfast kinda thing, although I like them all and I would eat them heartily. I don't know that it would buy that much. We're talking about major six-figure or above contributions and those just don't happen. So, we probably need to be thinking about a committee that would be responsible for that, similar to what we did with the High School Build a Dream, where people had jobs to do and people needed to be contacted. I mean, I think there's the usual name that comes up of a, will be unnamed tonight since there's a video rolling and the press may be here.
Well, we went to a breakout session at the OSBA and we'll forward that information to you. And I think that was a very, very good plan that actually Boardman used to build their stadium. They funded 100% of it. They didn't use any taxpayer dollars, so private funding for the entire thing.
Wow. That would be great and I think the NFL has a history of helping. They helped with Midview. I think maybe 250, 300,000, it's donations like that, perhaps naming rights of companies. You can have a scoreboard, we already have, I believe we're gonna reutilize the existing scoreboard that came in as a gift that cost us a few dollars. But the press box could be dedicated to a contributor, concessions. There's been talk about selling to get the community involved because there are so many sports fans and so many people do come to the stadium on Friday and band, it's not just athletics, the band is huge in this and they march on the field, that there's been some talk about the ability to sell squares, so to speak, on the field and to have rights on, or the credits on plaques that are near the field. But we have to get that in gear. I think the board should think about either resurrecting the initial stadium committee or some members from that committee, people who are willing to roll up their sleeves, perhaps have some background in fundraising to tap into the resources you just heard about.
One of the things that Boardman said was one of their biggest errors was making their main committee too big and they lost a lot of momentum and a lot of people that didn't do anything. They started with a very small committee and then had committees off of that, the number of subcommittees. They started off with like a 3,000 club. They're Spartans, so they used the 300 club. And they went out to the community and asked for donors to give $1,000 and got 300 people right off the bat, they were $300,000. And they went out for the big dollars to the big companies. Then they went to the small businesses. And then they did the, you know, field squares, bricks or what have you. They had a really nice process and were very successful and able to show momentum along the way and that's something we may wanna consider to.
I think we're practical people if that's a template.
Sure.
I think they raised eight million, so we're way ahead of them already, but, and they aren't finished.
Right.
But they did raise a lot of money. And it was interesting the process they did.
It's time to do that. Because it would be nice to see the stadium.
Sure.
Continue. It wouldn't have to be all at once because the building process is gonna take a year and a half, but if we could start collecting some of that money shortly, then architecturally, we could do that. And we should probably formalize the relationship with ABG for that project as well because they've already been working in that and I know he has. You would have your own process to follow with that, right?
Yeah.
I think ABG's been with us for 16 years, something like that, way before the high school was built.
Right.
You've been good partners.
Thank you.
Even with Kevin along.
Excellent work. Are there any questions about next steps? There were other things, too long for tonight, but things.
The press box.
Be talking about?
Is Jablonsky Press Box, is that too long a name to put on there?
No, it's a long press box.
Okay.
It was good. I got four toilets.
We accept payments.
Because if we're charging.
That's what he's talking about with the toilet.
Paul, I do have one quick question on that. One of the things that is very concerning with this is we talk about 21st century learning in these schools. This is probably the most important thing about this entire issue, is that we have 21st century learning facilities for the kids. I'm not sure anybody up here is an expert in that area. What, do you have a recommendation? I mean, we're gonna have to get somebody involved.
What's gonna happen, Greg, as we spoke about that today, there's actually, after the first of the year, when the architect is onboard, you, and this actually happens through the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission, you contract, and I forget the gentleman's name.
Frank Locker.
Locker. He will actually come into the community. It's three full days where you'll have between 50 and 60 people from your community, whether it's teachers, staff members, parents, students, board members, sit down and you will actually sit down, talk about the process of 21st century learning and what you want in your schools. So, they will talk about the process, what needs to happen to make it happen, and then the designs of the architect to build actually the building.
So, this is with the community and the educators?
Absolutely. Have you been through that?
Yes, we have been.
About 50, 60 people?
Yes, three-day session and again, that's, that's from the design side of it. Then, it's from the educational side of it, is, has to come from the district.
Absolutely.
Where your, your thought process as an education, that's where you're going. Obviously, the building has to fit what your educational philosophy is, but, so it all comes together with that.
We added 3.6 million dollars to our budget above and beyond.
Right.
The Facilities Commission so that we can utilize 21st century learning and teach the kids how they wanna learn and what we learned from research. But I think that is, it will probably additionally take the district beyond the seminar.
Absolutely.
Some kind of a leadership charge to make it happen in the schools because I shouldn't tell this story, but I'm gonna tell the story. When I was working to build the high school, and this is not gonna be easy for some people to hear, I thought we were going to be doing a little more 21st century instruction at the time and I think people liked the way that sounded and we had the building that could handle that. And we started furnishing the building and I was talking with Dr. Sutter at the time and he was taking the lead on that and he worked with the staff and without the, we learned from this and that's why I think I should tell it because we learned from this and I'll call it a mistake. We talked with the staff and talked about how to set up the rooms and many of the rooms were set up with desks that were traditional in rows of six chairs in a row and five rows of six and some had tables and other ways to deliver the instruction. in a row and five rows of six, and some had tables and other ways to deliver the instruction. And one thing about high school is that people really know their material, but the way to teach kids is to look at the elementary and see how those rooms are set up. And when you walk into an elementary class, sometimes you can't even see the teacher right away, or you're down the hallway and you can hear a little buzz. And we were ready for that then, in 2007, and then in 2010 and 11. Now we have teachers that are implementing some of these, these concepts with furniture that we bought new that are desks that you have to kind of move around and make, put them together to make tables and put them in a semicircle. And I think that it's critical, he can design space, but people have to be committed to how is this going to look? What would it sound like going down the hallways? And I think that
What would it look like when you walk into the classroom?
How's that going to look when you walk in the classroom? And that's going to be huge. Because it can look pretty and, and it needs to be ready.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Superintendent Actions.
Okay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to ask the board's consideration on the following items under Superintendent Actions. Item number one, to approve the overnight field trip for Alaria High School students to New York, New York on April 19th through the 22nd as detailed in enclosure K1. Item number two, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $28.30 per hour not to exceed five hours to the following teacher for a professional development Google Classroom workshop. This stipend will be supported by Title II A grant funds. Holly will be teaching a class to other educators on Google. Item number three, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $150 per day not to exceed 25 days each for assisting with testing during the course of the school year at Alaria High School. This stipend will be supported by the general fund. And as you could see, the individuals on there are former Alaria teachers and counselors. And these individuals will be helping out the testing process because what happens is if they're not helping, then the counselors are being pulled out of the classrooms.
I think so.
They're out of their offices. And that concludes my recommendations for the board's consideration this evening.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the superintendent in item K?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Who made the motion, please?
Jim.
Jim. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bax.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry.
Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Epstein.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Superintendent Other? Nothing?
Thank you, Mr. President. No items under Superintendent Other, but I do have several items under Personnel Action as recommended by the superintendent for the board's consideration. Item number one, to approve the retirement of the certified staff as detailed below. And I'd like to thank Betty Fisher and Mark Smith for their years of service in the Alaria School District. They will be retiring effective the end of the school year. Item number two, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Ashley Hunt, effect of November 5th. Item number three, appointment of certified staff to approve the appointment of the following certified staff members as detailed below. You'll see that we have Barb Bangham in there. Barb is coming back to do work with the district on an as-needed basis as a school psychologist. And as you could see, the pay is much higher. But again, that is due to her specialized skills and being a psychologist. It just wouldn't happen any other way. Item number four, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts for the following certified staff and non-employees as detailed below. You could see the names under certified staff as well as non-employees of the district for swim coach and boys and girls basketball at Westwood. Item number five, to approve the following game workers for their athletic service as detailed below. Nick Coleman. Item number six, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members as detailed below. And as you can see, there are several names. And I believe there's one or two of our new hires here tonight who are joining the Pioneer Family. And I'll allow Mr. Taylor, once we've completed this, to recognize any of the new hires that are here tonight. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under Personnel Actions.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to approve the personnel items recommended by the superintendent in item I.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Under item number, subject to appointment of certified
Uh huh.
Where it says not to exceed, is that 15 days? Is that per month? Or what is that?
Total. That would be total, correct, Mr. Taylor? That's total for the year, yes.
Total for the year? Okay. Thank you.
I see two more subs on there. Somebody's been busy, huh? Nice.
Check the chronicle or something.
All right. I think there's been subs on every time we've voted. Good. Very, good job.
Call the question, or the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
I demand.
No, wait, wait.
Mr. President, there are no actions under
Oh, yeah. Gary?
Thank you, George. Yes. It's a great pleasure to interview Starwood and join in business building operations over at Pioneer School.
Thank you for that qualification.
Welcome.
Welcome to the Pioneer Family.
As always, we give you five minutes to speak.
You still got four and a half minutes.
Thank you, Gary. Welcome.
Mr. President, I don't have any items to report on this evening. Everything has already been presented.
That's it? Board of Education, board? Does he have anything? We have to do the policies and regulations tonight?
Just to approve the first reading.
First reading.
Okay. Sure. How do you want to put this? First reading, the
To approve the first reading of
Following policies and regulations.
Right.
Administration of federal grants, nondiscrimination, nondiscrimination on the basis of sexual harassment, district website, school admission, admission of homeless students, admission of homeless students, hazing and bullying, hazing and bullying, integrations and searches to immunization
Got it.
and student records. May I have a motion to approve the first reading?
What's that?
Motion.
Couldn't hear you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Good lord. Mr. Paul? Roll?
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
May I have a request for an executive session to consider confidential information related to the specific business strategies of an applicant for economic development assistance and negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting a request for the economic development assistance as authorized under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22. We have two different things here. I think we should do them separate.
You mean go, go in and come back out?
No.
Okay.
Read this one.
Right. And read the other one.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to adjourn to executive session on the first item listed.
There's second.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Was that with action to follow or?
With no action to follow on this one. Ms. Global?
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And we need a second one, to request an executive session for the purpose of considering the employment, appointment, or compensation of a public employee or official with no action to follow as authorized under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22.
So moved.
Second.
Need discussion. Call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Move into executive session. Thank you all for coming.